Oh, I started.
Leading to order, would you please stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You, welcome.
And the next thing is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. I have a problem with the minutes from the last meeting. Uh, well, we spent uh like two thirds of the meeting talking about the transfer station and there's almost nothing in here about the transfer station.
I asked um uh Justin if he wanted me to put more in there when I sent him that I said this is, you know, I don't know how detailed you want me to get with this. I guess if you want me to do more, I can. And he never got back to me. So I can, I mean, if you want me to put.
I I would make a motion that we table this until our next meeting when Justin can be here, but uh it seems to me like there's some parts of the transfer station conversation that the public needs to know.
Okay.
Because we're, you know, the train is on its tracks. Or unless something has changed in the last two weeks for significant uh interruption to services at the transfer station.
Okay.
And um if it's not in our minutes, then it looks like we never had the conversation where we as a board are trying to do something proactive to anticipate that problem. And uh and exactly what the problem is. So.
I save all the notes. I save everything.
Okay.
So I can, I can go in and add.
I mean, I, it just seemed odd to me that we would spend an hour on the transfer station. But there's nothing here.
I'll second Kent's motion to table.
So the motion by Kent, second by Mark through uh table and then to the last meeting, all in favor? Thank you. Next is department report. Evening. I sent out your month of September. Worked. Month of September, we had um handle three hundred and seventy-one calls for service. We had three warrant arrests, three criminal summonses for operating out of suspension, a criminal summons to failure to register a motor vehicle, criminal summons for speed a hundred and five and a fifty-five. Good job, Olivia.
Good thing no one was hurt.
Alluding an officer violating conditions of release and operating without a license. And an arrest for robbery and violations of two conditions of release. Road race and apple fest was past weekend and awful without any issues. Thanks for all who made it, made it possible. Thanks to fire department for their assistance. Hurricanes we need. This next one i- is really important to me because I'm really proud of the monitor police department and the efforts that were made by all, but specifically I wanna take a minute to thank the men and women of monitor police department for their work on making Nathan Natasha Benable case. For those who don't recall, last year we investigated child sex abuse accusation, which led to the arrest of Natasha Benable. After several search warrants on her residence and all of her electronics, I think we ended up doing five, four or five warrants. Uh, very time consuming case. We're able to gather enough evidence to charge her for twenty-two felony counts of sex abuse on minor possession of child pornography. On September twenty-seventh, Natasha Benable was found guilty on all twenty-two charges and was sentenced to forty years in prison. Very proud of the work that our team did to make sure that the investigation is conducted appropriately. And in such a manner that we were able to attain the sentence that was appropriate for the crimes perpetrated on the children. I'd like to especially recognize Officer Olivia Mara, stand up please. Uh, for all the hard work and hours she put into this investigation and seeing it through to the finish, and I just want to thank you. If you look at the page, page, page three, these are the double sided performance. Stats for the month by hour and day, you'll notice that between the hours of two and and six, you're gonna start seeing those numbers increase just because we have someone who knows during that time period where in the past we have not. It's all I got to the the increasing numbers that we have. And I provided you again with the, the breakdown of um all the complaints. Now, all of these complaints in here, they include um fire department calls for service, evening calls for service, and law enforcement calls for service in town on the very, very much. You can prove it at your own um ways, as I just thought for you guys to look over and collect and get. And very last page, you just graphing um how consistent, consistent your call, calls are from year to year. Um, the twenty-two calls complaints, I mean, if you follow them month to month, you can see they go up and down about the same twenty-two as they do in twenty-three. Nothing only in non, non, normally is uh in July of this year, we, we kind of had it down here, but I forget that. It's not raining in July. That's my report for you folks tonight. If you have any questions?
I'm looking at the last page. And I'm assuming the first January through May are the old system.
Correct.
In the previous year.
Yeah. There's such a difference in there because this, this lore between January and and May is before we went on the Spelman system. So this is only recording the fire and ambulance calls in town.
Right. Okay. So then the apples to apples comparison would start June?
In May. Uh, yeah, in June. Yes, in June.
Yet still, we're looking at I mean, I'm just eyeballing it. Looks like for the four months where we have an apples to apples comparison, a twenty-five, twenty percent, twenty-five percent increase in calls. And are these calls that we respond to? Are these just calls? So?
These are calls that we physically respond to. They generate a complaint at the, at the police station and once a complaint is generated at the police station, we respond to. A- another point to bring up is that with the Spelman system, the record keeping is far more accurate than the IMT was. Uh, so you're getting truer numbers out of this RMS system than we did before.
And I assume the railroad knows that those bells and lights have been going off all afternoon.
They are aware. They made a way very early in the afternoon and we have to take care.
Well, I was walking and said to Dana, um, the school bus is stopped down there and I'm sure the school bus doesn't want to just drive over it. One school bus pulled over and stopped. Dana went down and ushered them across.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Man from North Monmouth saying that he never sees the police. Uh, well, he lives on the whole road. I can see this, but like.
That's North Monmouth.
Oh, oh, good. I will, I will tell you that we do, we do both in North Monmouth. We set our radar signs up in North Monmouth. When they are, it just opportune times with, you know, people just don't see us.
This is Mark Kane. But don't out him on a record.
We'll, we'll go, we'll go send his yacht and run right out. Sorry, I appreciate that because I'm getting speeding complaints all over the place.
I do have to say, I appreciate the adap- adapting the location of the radar system based on the complaints that we get where people are saying, hey, can you do something about it? And the radar system shows up a week later and that's the following Monday, whatever that is. And then I got a, I got a call, I've got a call that complimented the police department. It was a follow-up to a complaint.
So good. I appreciate that. Good hearing that. The positives come back to us because all the time we have the negatives. The uh, the amount of traffic on, on Wilton Bond Road is just incredible during, during the summer. I mean, that last week we had it set up. And I think we had in a ten-day period, we had thirty-seven hundred cars going down that route.
Is that the campground?
Yes. And that's directional, so it's thirty-seven hundred going in. It doesn't count them coming back out. Double that and that's the amount of traffic over that dirt road.
In the speed sign, when it's not flashing and there's just a dot, it's just recording speeds.
Yeah, it means the battery is getting low, so it's a self-protection mode.
Yeah. As I know that we talked about when it's not recording speeds, it's actually, you know, a little more accurate of what's happening rather than when it's flashing a speed and people slow down. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. For all you did.
Yes.
How old were the victims in that case?
Uh, the youngest at the time that the investigation started was thirteen. The oldest was sixteen. The debut started when they were both ten. They were there for six years. The other dead was there for three.
Uh, was it a jury trial?
It was not. They pled uh all charges. They did a plea deal.
Thank you.
Fun update on the firehouse museum. Um, we met with D P uh two weeks ago and uh we did the application for permanent value rule. Uh, everything is going through, so I think we're, we're good with that. Uh, this is about two hundred and ninety bucks, but um we're gonna probably just uh slope the land and and just kind of restore it to its original uh slope uh versus putting on a potential retained wall back up. Less permanent, less hoops to jump through, you know, it'll just just restore it to its natural growth, so it'll look good. And um I think we're okay to take that trashy tree or to him, but he said we should check code.
Yeah, just, just.
Just let him know.
Just let him.
And then we're gonna move the building. That's our next step. So we'll wait on an estimate for that and uh depending on what that cost is going to be, it's gonna dictate whether we do it this fall or not. And that has to be done before we can do the shoreline. So uh, everything's kind of on hold at this point. We're still trying to gather up uh donations for uh contractors to build the materials. Um, we've got some people lined up for that. So hopefully we can do it pretty inexpensively, but elephant in the room is moving the bill, what it's gonna cost. So we'll see and I'll keep you guys posted. All harvest sale, if you didn't see it on Facebook, I got postponed Saturday at a little tropical storm coming up again. Um, so you're on the side of caution and just moving it to next weekend. So it'll be on the, the same day as our Sparky breakfast. So next Saturday, the fourteenth will be both events and we're gonna do it both right at the firehouse. So breakfast from seven to ten and then on your way out, pick a pumpkin or a bag of apples or some baked goodies. Support our Richard Pete Milligan scholarship. I mean, I'll give you a copy of this stuff. Get a chance to photocopy. I'll give it to you. See if they can announce film. Kill yourself. Yeah, I got a lot here to cover. Um then uh next Tuesday, tenth, we'll be up at the Monmouth Memorial School during our fire prevention week. Uh, activities for preschoolers through the second graders. Um, last year they came down, visited our firehouse. This year they want to so I'll bring our smoke trailer and I think we're gonna park out back this year. Um, down by the do it kind of discreetly out back. And then also as part of fire prevention week, uh we'll be doing our coloring contest, picking winners for a ride to school. We'll do that a couple of weeks uh after our activity at the school. Um Halloween's coming right up in four weeks. So just putting that out there as we do every year, get five, six hundred people to start collecting their candy. So we already got boxes out at the firehouse.
Started. Thank you.
Yeah. To tell you, incident wise, uh, not too bad. We've had a few incidents. Most notable was the fatality crash over two was a pretty, pretty nasty one. Uh, we did have a few firefighters that helped extricate that victim. Um, they went through the critical stress debrief and that winter put on, which I thought was very beneficial.
Appreciate it.
Well, yes. Yeah, yeah. Uh, last thing I have is the, my trip to Tucson, Arizona. Um, I got the phone call to, they were able to find funding for two more firefighters. So if you're blessed, I'd like to take Lance Rennie and Ayesha, her husband. So both have expressed interest and got the time and they take off. Fly down and attend that cancer uh prevention conference. Yay, I'll take it down.
I make a motion that we uh allow the fire department to receive the donation of uh cancer prevention conference trip uh for two additional people.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kent, uh second by Chris to allow the fire department to uh send two more members of the fire department to the conference in Phoenix. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions on?
You know, tonight we have two. I want to listen now. Uh, select board reports.
The only thing I, I have while Paul is here, we had some discussion um at the last meeting about a proposed uh housing thing on Main Street. Was, was that considered? I want to make sure I have the term right. Was it low income housing?
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing. So uh, the Economic Development Committee met with the developer who is floating the proposal. And it is, uh, that was last night. We had a special meeting so that he could present his idea. I'll be objective about it and say the idea was presented uh as a single building of eighteen units. I want to say seventeen of those eighteen would be two-bedroom apartments. One, one bedroom. I recall if there were three-bedroom apartments, no. Yeah, so it's mostly two and one. Uh, he presented a a very basic floor plan. Um, he presented uh uh a an image of a building, a similar building that was produced by the architect he's partnering with. So we have sort of a flavor of what this might look like. Uh, he requested a uh credit enhancement agreement to the tune of ten, eleven thousand dollars a year.
Eleven thousand. It'd be half of twenty-five thousand, what the his assessed value would be uh, or his share of taxes. So fifty percent of that would be about eleven thousand. Twenty-year period.
The total project cost would be uh construction cost. No, I think it was total project cost, so about five million dollars.
Construction was three points.
Three point six plus a bunch of other stuff. Right? Overhead administrative, blah, blah, blah. Real estate acquisition. Legal stuff. So the total project cost would be about five million dollars. Uh, the requirement for him to get funded, he would, he's applying to main housing for a zero percent loan. And the requirement to qualify for that loan is that he has to focus on uh folks who make, I think it was a single a, a one-person household would be forty-five thousand dollars less. A two-person household would be fifty-two thousand dollars or less. And uh, there's no additional su- subsidy involved with that. He's, he's gonna be reliant on the rents to pay his mortgage and the operating costs of the, of the building. But, but the requirement of the low, the low interest, the very low interest loan requires him to go after that segment of the market. There was a conversation about the trail. The snowmobile trail. He sounded pretty willing to be flexible about.
He's from Green and the former sandhill member of their club. He loves the idea of having the trail accessible. That property.
Yep.
If, if it encroached on wherever he set it up, he would work to have us, you know, reroute it on his property so that trail would not be.
The purpose of last night's meeting was just to ask questions and not make decisions. So that's what we did. We spent probably an hour, hour and a half with him to have that conversation.
So the concern, Paul, was we have two or three um buildings in town that currently house I would say not high-income earners. Um, and I was curious as to the call volume um related to those buildings. Um is, I'm guessing on a higher percentage than the, the rest of the town.
Yeah, a hundred percent honestly, we, uh we have a very low call volume, the one on Main Street next to the fire station. We I mean, what over the years, I, I look back and say, yeah, we, we've had some problematic people in there, but as of late, we have not.
This was the one. I'll sit well there or the Ray Brown building.
No, it's Leonie's building. Yeah.
Yeah, so. Without seeing and understanding the concept of who is target audiences other than what I've heard tonight, hard to say. Um, I know in other communities, uh where they put up these, these more buildings, they put the on who they allow in their screening because the building, they don't want to destroy it. So um it all depends on what his screening process is and ones down now, we really don't have any problems.
Not a major concern.
This is an example of the one that he shared with us. This is the one in, in New Orleans.
He sounded as though he would be very selective in I think uh in who he would be.
Well, I mean, I think the reality of the rental market right now is there are very few. And people are moving out of town in order to find places to rent. So if he's limited to the maximum income the per, of, of that person, he's gonna have a huge pool to draw from unless the market changes. And and, you know, the way this is is constructed, he's gonna do his very best to find the squeakiest, cleanest, least the most manageable tenants he can find that make just underneath the threshold so that they can, he can be absolutely certain they're gonna be able to pay their bills. So uh
I'll subsidize and then, you know, people that would pay, let's say, uh twelve, twelve hundred dollars, I think was the, the rent that included utilities um for a one-bedroom and out of that twelve hundred, you know, somebody only paid three hundred because they have other funding, you know, aid. And he said, no, this, this isn't that type of program. So I was thinking like Knox Street, you know, downtown most of that.
So I mean, the town, you know, we're, we're at those income levels, we're looking at, you know, a starting teacher at the academy. Or we're looking at a couple of ed techs. Uh that are looking to live locally and work.
Oh, college kids. My, my son had, had, had done this down in New Hampshire. On a college there for his master's and his girlfriend had stayed in an apartment building where they had to improve their income. And it was based on these formulas and that was the only way they could stay there.
Right. And so that's a requirement of the zero percent mortgage that is the majority of his financing.
We all know however, that congest that many people in a confined area like that, it only takes one bad apple for things to expand.
Yep. Uh, I, in the defense of this developer, he's been in the housing business for quite some time. Uh, not only in the administrative um position with main housing for about ten or fifteen years, but also in a property management type of capacity where he's run large buildings like this and been involved in. Yep.
Almost a decade.
Right.
And then the past two years, he's out on his own trying to develop his own portfolio.
Yeah.
Something like seventy.
So, um uh, there'll be another meeting of the Economic Development Committee to ash out what we want to say to the select board in terms of what we think the strengths and weaknesses of this application are. And it's not necessarily a slam dunk, but we will certainly be interested in feedback from folks.
And this is just a piece, this is just a piece for seeking additional funding to help with, because he's got a tight budget. So he's looking for the credit kickback, you know, the credit cancer program. He's still gonna go to the planning board, you know, he's gonna, I think, present to you guys, the board.
Yeah, we, we gave him the planning board chair's name. So the chair could be expecting a phone call.
Yeah.
Uh, on the plus side, he is definitely uh gonna be connecting to all of the uh utilities that run past that parcel. So the water and the sewer would definitely be part of it.
It's on Academy Road.
No, it's on uh Main Street.
Can be all electric. All electric appliances. He comes, uh, it's electric, no gas. Part of the unit then. And we'll be sprinkled.
How far walk is it?
How far walk is it into uh Monmouth Center?
Two oh two is two miles by our house.
It's about halfway.
It's about a mile to five, five, four Main Street.
Uh, he imagined that the building. Would be situated perpendicular to the road, so the length of the building would run east west.
He did venture that it would might. Would be set up something solar could be on the roof.
Be designed or engineered to accommodate the weight of solar panels, so I gotta do it at first, but. Wants to have the auction in the future added to the structure. Which if everything's electric, that would make sense, I've said it's electric.
The town is under an obligation under this new housing law to. Review and update. Land use ordinances to. Encourage these multifamily projects as well as to allow. For additional. Units on single family lots, which hasn't happened yet. I mean, I've heard nothing from the town manager, what if he wants the planning board to do anything on this, but I think. I think the last legislative session gave the smaller towns a little more time to. Kind of do that review and update. But there's a big push in that legislation because there's a housing crisis in the state right now.
Well, and we're feeling it. I mean, the reality of it is, uh, I could tell you two or three people who've moved out of Monmouth. Because they couldn't, they, they couldn't find a place to rent. And it's, you know, I mean, we're not, we're also talking about potential. You know, for people who want to downsize. Who are, don't want the burden of a giant home. Maybe the kids have left. The, the nest and they want to stay in the community. Not a whole lot of spots for that.
I think there was an article in the paper today in the Sun about Lisbon doing that review and the. Accessory drawings and things like that. I think it was Lisbon, if I remember the town correctly, but.
Will we, will the, the economic development committee be meeting?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth to actually have a conversation about what we want to do. Yeah, anything else from the? Go on to uh public comments. Mr. Chair, have we heard anything? About the transfer station problem solving process?
They get, I think there are some candidates that uh who've applied. I'm not sure if they've been interviewed or not, uh, so I don't know where the. Processes of finding new.
Do we know if uh any of the positions being advertised are being advertised with benefits?
I think they are.
Well, I mean, you can get benefits, they're just pro rated. I mean, if you work twenty hours, your benefits are. You know, from what I understand, I mean, if you work only for twenty hours, then you can get benefits, but they're only covered at. At percentage, so that's my understanding.
And so the, the positions being advertised are being advertised for how many hours? Just the hours of operation of the transfer station?
Yes.
And so in the winter time, that means three days a week. Eight hours a shift.
That's what the job entails. And I haven't seen the. Advertisement, it hasn't, I haven't gone on and looked, but obviously it's posted somewhere, but I'm not sure. Where, and I haven't seen them, so.
Either, and I, uh, and I haven't really discussed it with uh Dan Dunton. And he's been under the weather for a few days. Cause uh. I think it has COVID or tested positive for COVID, it's sort of his wife. And they, maybe gave it to all, all you guys.
I understand over there, I haven't seen that. Any advertising for the items he was talking about putting out to bid, but I did have a request that. They were requesting that get printed in the community advertiser for the people that do not use Facebook and social media and. When he comes up with that list of what he's gonna put out to bid, that they were requesting it get put in the community advertiser. That time comes. You make a note for Justin to make sure that happens.
I'm wondering if we could. Request that the town manager. Schedule our next meeting, schedule into our next meeting, a substantial conversation about the transfer station. I'm aware that uh. You know, if we get to the holiday and we don't have a solution, that we might have to. Further cut services.
Follow the roads or do we take the trash?
Yeah.
Transfer station only on the weekends now, no, open Wednesday, Wednesday too. That, that guy over there was. Yes.
Does anybody know if anybody applied for the Andy Man transition?
No, I asked about that and there's been. One person applied. And uh Laurie said that uh. I think he decided he didn't want to do it.
Because it's still got me, chief.
So I'll to uh consider a proposal from the uh I V O C, community planning and consulting. Provide consulting service for the comprehensive. Yeah, let me go to the O D M or should I stay here?
So, if you know, we, we had a lot of starts and stops. Uh, with the comp plan, started before COVID. Got slowed down there, um, and we had the unfortunate experience of having four different people from. K V cog. So that process sort of stopped. And one of the. One of the consequences of not having a updated comprehensive plan is. That my understanding is a lot of the state grant you can't get. Uh, if you don't have an up to date plan, so we're, we're hoping to get this up and running. Um, the people who, the planners are almost, or maybe they are as in short supply and. Go enforcement officers, so I've talked to a number of people. Thought I had a guy from, I think it's called Black Bear Consulting. And he just said, we're so busy, but I think I've got somebody who can help you, and it's this Isabel. I don't know if I'll say her name right, she's asleep, so she gave us this proposal. Um, so we're at a point where we've got. We've got a lot of written sections, some of them are written much better than others. But there are some important aspects we need to do, like the capital improvement section, the future land use section. And we did a survey about four years and we got a pretty good response. But in talking to Isabel and some of the other members of the committee. We really think we should go out and do another survey just to kind of get the sense of the community. Especially since COVID, you know, a lot of people have. Working from home, you know, and maybe looking for different services in the town and. Uh, when we were pre-COVID, um. So initially Isabel looked at what we had for a project and what she thought we needed and came up with this figure of. Fifty thousand dollars or over that. There were some suggestions made that maybe we could pair this back. I think they tend to some extent, I had a. Uh, a video conference with Isabel this morning. And we think there's a few areas that we can pair this back, like for instance, uh, I think it's in phase two. She was suggesting that there be an interactive website for thirty five hundred dollars where. People in the community could get online and see and maybe those comments and so forth. And she thinks we could probably eliminate that and perhaps put up a page on the town website. Um, another significant item is having some community workshops. Uh, typically you might have one in the evening and one on a Saturday. Um, and do presentations, she said we could cut that back and maybe only do one. Might save us about half the money. And we looked and thought there were some areas that maybe the work is complete, we don't have to do as much. On the phase one review, um, so she's thinking. Probably about thirty one thousand dollars, we could get this done. With those, the two most significant reductions would be getting rid of the website, um. Cutting back a little on workshop. Meetings. But as I say, talking with her, she thought we could, could reduce this by hopefully. So I, you know, I guess my suggestion, if, if you folks would go along with it is to maybe. Limit this to thirty one thousand at this point and uh. If something unusual occurred, then come back, but. It, it's a lot of work, you know, there's a lot of writing and reviewing. In the, we never got the updated census information in the plan, which we should. So this, that's quite a bit of work for the planner to do. We have a volunteer committee, we're not, nobody's getting anything, this money would all go to this uh. Person who would help us write the plan. Help us coordinate public meeting, um. See that, you know, have communication with the state office that reviews this. Got to get the, the plan to them to have it reviewed, they send it back, they might say we have to make changes. I'd have to bring this again before the community and, and the goal I think would be to try to get this on uh. The November ballot, if we can get this all together by. Twenty four. You know, I think you've got in your packet, um, Isabel's experience. And I think she kind of professionally laid things out for us and uh. You know, our hope would be that we'd have a meeting with her maybe in the next couple of days. Get this brain moving again.
What have we budgeted? In this fiscal year for this process?
I don't know, I mean.
I have that answer. So, looking at that figure and not remembering what we had, I. Um, talked with Laurie and then I reached out to Mark Roy, our CPA. And then Justin confirmed it later today that we had um ten thousand dollars allocated for the purpose. And um, and it's under other contracted, contracted services for comprehensive plan consultants. So we do have ten thousand dollars in the kitty to get started. But we'd have to.
Either stretch it out over another fiscal year.
Or have something.
Transfer something.
On in November or the rest of the money in April on the ballot, but we'd have to. Come up with obviously um twenty one thousand dollars somewhere and. That's the big thing, so.
What's it costing us in terms of state grants?
You know, I mean, I kind of follow to some extent what you folks are doing and there's been talk about getting grant for this and that. Um, I mean, that's, you know, another thing I think we lack in the town is having a town planner. You know, someone to kind of push some of the items that needs to be done and help with grant writing. Making sure we update ordinances, like when you get these changes in the legislature. Initially, um, the last town manager, I think, tried to contract with. K V cog for a planner, but that all fell apart when they're staffing down. Yeah, you know, the town is probably missing some opportunities because we don't have kind of that infrastructure built in.
I know.
And I wasn't really privy to what the agreements were with K V cog, I just know that. Quality of the work we got was not very high. Some of the sections that they wrote just. Like it was written by a sixth grader or something. So, yeah, I don't know, I mean, I, I, you know, the, the, we can drag out this process till the, till the next fiscal year and use the. Ten, I suppose, if that's the way we have to go, but whether we, you know, the big thing is you're gonna get something together. For public hearing. And then get to the state, the state's gonna take a couple of months probably to review it. They're gonna come back and. Maybe make some suggestions, hopefully not, hopefully we'll get a product to them that they'll say, wow, this is good, uh, that's why you want a professional. Uh, cause they know what the state is gonna require.
Uh, if we were to. Ask the voters to allocate the balance. It would probably have to wait till March.
Exactly.
Beyond the window for November's. I mean, it may also be that we've got some other place in the budget where we can find the balance.
I don't know where the, where we stand with what's left for any ARPA stuff or anything like that, or that those. Are up for grabs still for something like this, um, but. I know Steve Eldridge is working on some grants for the academy project. And um, with all of his knowledge and. He's looked in a lot of places that, you know, he knows to look and um, so it may impact some of those grants if we don't. some of those grants if we don't have a cop plan ready to go for those for those grants that he's looking into, because they are, you know, at the state level. So.
I know with the North Monmouth Water Project, there are some due dates that are coming up early in next year. Don't know if the application is going to ask anything about the comprehensive plan, but.
Yeah. So I think that I don't know what she's open for. And if we say, well, we've got ten. And I think my first email with Mark gave us information that there was at the end of fiscal year twenty one, it had a balance of seven hundred and one dollars in it. So and then we have the ten thousands.
Ten thousand, seven hundred and one dollars.
Yes, exactly. So anyway, but whether or not I don't know what that, what the woman is open to, if she would start working on things that at that, and then we move forward and say, you know, the balance is to be finished and after it goes to the voter. So I don't know if we have to table this till we can get some more information other than the ten thousand dollars. I know time is of the essence, but.
Does the figure seem reasonable to you guys overall?
I mean, I have no, no.
It's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money, but I didn't have the point of reference. I mean, I think the only point of reference we have is with the contracting with the assessors, but you know, that that's another whole much larger project. So.
It seems reasonable to me. Considering the cost of standing still.
Yes. And, you know, I don't know what we actually have done that she can use from before, or if all of that stuff has to happen to come up with a complete product, product in the end.
So you probably have about ten primary sections, say, in the plan. And probably three or four are pretty good because committee members wrote them. We have some others that need tweaking, but they're not, you know, so there's a sort of a background statement about Monmouth to give history and context. And then you have something on, say, agriculture and natural resources and recreation activities and town business and a capital improvement plan. And so some of those things like capital improvement, hopefully the town manager can kind of help us based on what you guys have projected out, you know, that we can. Things like demographic information, yes, we need her help on that a lot. And the big thing is future land use, you know, what, what does the town need to keep the community the way the residents would like to see it and what things are coming down the road that will you know, impact the community. Yeah, but that takes time. But we got a lot of segments that are in pretty good shape. They may need editing. But the future land use, capital improvement ones need to be, they need more extensive work. And then we haven't done any outreach into the community since we did the the survey. We haven't had any community meetings. I mean, we try to let people know we're meeting and so forth, but you know, it would be good to let people know. And so she coordinates, helps us coordinate that, have a meeting, have a little dog and pony show and handouts. And then the work, getting the plan finalized into the state, that's a big part. Already spent quite a bit of money on getting all the maps updated, all that stuff is done. Was going to be a big requirement coming up down the next step and to the plan that we were working on. That was all done during COVID and just finished now. So all the showland maps are up to date and all that stuff now is done. It's going to save us a heck of a lot of time and her a heck of a lot of time. She can just pull pull it out of the computer at this point. So, you know, hopefully that was going to be a big project working through when we started, when we were working through COVID, to try to get all that stuff put together was just an impossibility.
Did she review what we have done?
Yes. So we have a we have a Donna Seppi set up a Google Docs for us. So we put all the materials on this. And I was going to get your emails so you could get access to it, Mark. And so she reviewed that.
And faced her price on.
Yeah. So she said, yeah. Some is good, some is not good, some is incomplete. But that's really been helpful to us to have those documents in one place. People can go in and make an edit or kind of create a new draft with edits that they think are appropriate, but again, that process broke down. I think, you know, getting someone who is professional and can you know, when you get a volunteer committee, you find that things don't always get done between meetings. You really need somebody to push you along.
Is it possible for the members of the board to get copies of what's available right now?
Think so.
When Google picked up?
Yeah. Or at least to look at it. I think if you've got acts, you know, I can ask Donna, I think she has to send an invite.
Yes, and it can be read only as opposed to ability to edit.
So she can I can ask her, you know, get everybody's email. I mean, it's on, I think it's on the website, isn't it? And and then ask that she give you all permission. And you can see what's, what's there. But as I say, there's, there's a lot of material there.
Do you meet monthly?
So what we were doing is we were meeting on Wednesdays on the off weeks that the select board didn't meet. So we haven't had a meeting since January. Because that was the point we said, we're not going to get anywhere without anybody. And it took a couple of months to find this one company that responded. And, you know, I reached out to about a half dozen companies. The state has lists consultants on the economic development, I think, website. And then the guy that I was dealing with said, give me a couple of months. I'm hiring some new people. And he and I started up the conversation this summer. And then he suddenly said, let me give you the name of a couple of people. We're not going to be able to help you till next year. And I didn't want to wait till next year. And that's where Isabel came in.
So will you resume that schedule every other?
Yeah, I don't know if we'll need to meet at that, you know, we might need a couple of meetings. And then I think we may not need some for a while while she kind of takes some information, synthesizes it, gives us maybe some updates. But I think we need to have, I mean, what I talked to her about was coming to a meeting where we're there, we kind of talk about a plan going forward. And then, you know, I think to try to cut down expenses, I said to her that we thought after that first meeting, the next few meetings with her, she could participate by Zoom. That would cut down travel expense. I think she lives in Yarmouth and Gloucester, somewhere in that area. But I think once she gets the feel what the committee wants, you know, I mean, I've been the only one talking to her and maybe you know, other people are going to have some ideas or comments. Think a lot of the, you know, a lot of the work she can do on her own, like the demographic information for the last census and things like that and and getting some updated information from the town manager on capital improvements and so forth.
And Mark and Dave are on the committee and you're on the committee.
Yeah, Donna Stepi, Andy Smith, Milhouse.
Has he been able to attend?
Andy has been very involved and Ray Simon from the planning board, Paul Rude. Paul has been very active and Bonnie Green. Jim Connors was on it and I, someone told me he might have moved out of town.
Yeah, he moved.
He moved.
Yeah. So I don't know whether we need any additional members or not. But we had a couple of other people that sort of drifted off that we haven't really had contact with for a while. Dave Lewis is on it as well, the chair of the Board of Appeals. He's been very active. So, you know, most meetings we have probably eight people.
Let me talk a little bit about process. For, have we already done an RFP? Or are we required to do an RFP for a contract of this magnitude? I don't know. I think there is a certain dollar threshold where it might be required. So
Justin would know.
Justin would know that. And we should make sure that we're dotting i's and crossing t's before we make a motion about this. My gut would tell me that once we check that fact that I would be willing to make a motion that we allocate the ten thousand, seven hundred and one dollars
There's some change.
For this fiscal year and that we either find the balance in another budget line or put it before the voters in March when we have the primary vote. So that we could be authorized for the balance.
Yeah, I think that's what we have to do because and also perhaps if you have more information from her, how if she would be willing to work at that. You know, if we did have the ten thousand and allocate the rest, is she okay with that? That's another important piece of information. So in two weeks' time, if we have that piece of information from her would, would be helpful. And then we'll ask about the RFPs.
Don't be, we'll get a lot of your.
Exactly. I mean,
I wouldn't imagine, but we got to make sure.
Yeah.
You know, whether that process has to happen or not.
Memory serves, my memory is getting old. I think it's a ten thousand dollar threshold.
We, Justin gave us an updated budget.
Yes, he did. Would you like to review that, Mr. Chair? Would you like to review that?
Well, I was, I don't know if we can review it, but I was wondering if have you asked the look and maybe is there something in here?
I wouldn't even know what line item is called for and what we've what we have and where we can move things from. So, you know.
What we have is kind of.
Exactly.
But whether you can move stuff.
Well, exactly. That's the other thing. And whether or not there's, you know, something sitting somewhere, remaining ARPA funds or anything like that, or we gave them all to you.
Let me go, we'll just take it back.
So. So.
We're finding an operating line that
Exactly.
is not being fully utilized.
That's right. So.
We had a conversation about the rec department. Last meeting, right?
Yeah. So I make a motion, we table this till next week, when, or next week, in two weeks. To our next meeting when we have more information about whether RFPs are needed and whether the planner would be open to that and where the extra twenty one
Twenty thousand, two hundred ninety nine dollars.
Would come from.
Second. Put the motion by Chris, second by Joe to table the, considering the proposal with the comprehensive plan and till our next meeting.
I'll let you know.
Thank you.
I talked to her and spending, we might have to wait until RFP.
You should wait a bit because the next item is appointing.
Have the candidates lined up. Someone lock the door.
I don't know, maybe if it's going to be controversial, maybe we should go into executive session. Oh, are we going to do, are we going to do witnesses?
Yeah, Chief Perlin isn't here to give his impression of the candidate.
Well, I'll move to appoint David Shaw as a planning board alter. Second. Motion by Joe, second by Kent, who is David Shaw. As a planning board alternate, all in favor.
You're in trouble now. You're lucky you're down.
It'd be difficult to get someone in by next Friday, Thursday, because they're off today, tomorrow, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
Yeah.
Now we're in for it.
Yeah, that's what we do wrong.
Exactly. He's going to be cracking the whip with the agenda and the notices.
You should make him deal with the hecklers.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm good at that.
He tells me, he used to tell me, letting them talk to.
I got it from Mike Seer. So, you know, I'm, I'm just going to fill his spot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You won.
Next thing is the wire number seven for this fiscal year, twenty three, twenty four.
So items over a thousand dollars, Blue Rock Earthworks. Part of it was for Culvered Kaplan Drive. Replacement of a culvert there, so thirty three thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. CMP. There's a lot of CMPs, but there's only one over a thousand, one thousand, two hundred twenty four dollars and five cents.
Should everybody's.
No, exactly. That was comes in. So Creative Digital Postage for Tax Bills, one thousand, two hundred and fifty three dollars and forty eight cents. DJ's Municipal Supply. Palette Palm Patch and Safety Vess, one thousand, six hundred, thirty three dollars and ninety eight cents. Dennis K Burke, Gas and Diesel, six thousand, one hundred, fifty five dollars and seventy three cents. Baby and Oil, this is the Public Works, I believe, new furnace, eleven thousand, eight hundred, seventy four dollars and eleven cents. Jensen Bard Legal Services, one thousand, five hundred, twenty three dollars and seventy five cents. Kennebitt County Registry of Deeds, these are the twenty twenty two tax leads. Two thousand, six hundred and forty one dollars. Laura Shell Consulting, the September billing, one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Lucas Striping for Townwide Roads. Twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty nine dollars and fifty seven cents. Main Commercial Tire, Transport Station Equipment and Repairs, four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and ninety six cents. Mean, main equalization consultants. Two thousand, four hundred and thirty seven dollars and fifty cents. Main Municipal Association, Workman's Comp. Seven thousand, seventy seven dollars and sixty cents. Main Technology Group, wireless headset adapter and a security appliance. One thousand, three hundred and eighty nine dollars and ten cents. Monmouth Water Association for Hydrants. Twenty nine thousand, three hundred and five dollars and twenty nine cents. Motorola, Motorola Solutions Police Department, microphone and accessories, one thousand, four hundred and thirty seven dollars and Motorola, Motorola Solutions Police Department microphone and accessories, one thousand 437 dollars and 70 cents. Northeast Emergency Apparatus, um, this was for the hydro testing, one thousand 279 dollars and 63 cents. RSU two, five hundred and sixteen thousand 459 dollars and 57 cents. Your Moon of Vehicles, thirty two thousand 404 dollars and 29 cents. Um, the State of Maine Subsurface Wastewater Plumbing Permits, one thousand 240 dollars. Tacoma Lake Association, our annual support, a thousand dollars. US Cellular. I highlighted that incorrectly, so it was only 210 dollars, never mind. So, Viking Seeds, 11 foot blade, two thousand 848 dollars, forty seven dollars and 27 cents. That's it.
Are we um, the threshold of more than a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars per account or a thousand dollars per check?
Um, I, I read them if it's a total, combined, if we're sending one check to one thing. And I think the only reason we read them is because the select board in the past requested to know what was being paid.
Right.
So.
So when we, when you say there's only one CMP account that's more than a thousand dollars,
Exactly.
are we writing more than one check to CMP?
Exactly, because they all have different, they're different um, account numbers. And um, so if you.
So we're writing different checks?
Depends on how the C.
CMP, I think he, because they're going into different um, buildings and so some of them go to Public Works.
He should be writing one check.
So he may write one check, but they're listed out here separately, so, but that, that's how.
Because I have to.
Well, that's, this is the point of Mike.
Put in an invoice. I put in an invoice for the PV, supposedly he gets one for the fire department, but three times, Justin grants them and so then we don't know what our bill was for the month.
So they have different account numbers and then they get posted to different um,
Numbers.
Different account numbers in QuickBooks. So I think that's why they are separate. Because if you look at this list, it says Fire Department, Police Department, Comston Hall, Fire Department, so North Monmouth Center, Recreation, Public Works, Municipal Building, Recreation, so. Exactly.
Fire departments come in the same week. There's no reason why the accountant can't, or I don't, is the accountant writing the check or is it?
The accountant, the accountant's writing the checks.
Not really, the accountant can't write one check.
And he very well may do that, so.
Then you just read that one line for that week, you know, that warrant.
Some of them he has put together, but I think, um, I'm sure he probably does write one check. I'm thinking that.
And so when, when you're reading it, you're reading the checks or you're reading the accounts?
I'm reading the checks over a thousand dollars. That's what I read. Because I didn't take out my calculator and add up the CMP accounts because I didn't think you'd ask me to do that, if you want. If you want me to total the CMP and give you a total.
It's like. But, did, did you guys agree that? Seems like a public security law, I guess.
They tried, but they noted it down.
Oh, they did.
Yeah.
Well, there, there was a time when it was suggested that we wouldn't do this at all and we felt that that was a little too. Oops.
Seems like a thousand dollars.
Well, it's definitely a thousand dollars doesn't go very far anymore, so.
So, so then what's the total for CMP this, this time?
Yeah. Back in the spring and uh, we were discussing the uh, solar, the census. And I thought, well, why not just look at up here, all our electric lumped together.
But it doesn't have all the electric lumped together. It's all broken down by department. And so when I go through and I pull out all of the 7201, which are the accounts, electricity within each department, 7201 is the CMP account. I'm looking through and I'm referring to this spreadsheet, which is July 1st to September 21st, and that's maybe 40% through the fiscal year. There is not a single CMP account that is less than 80% out, uh, spent. Not one. And this is with a $40,000 CMP bill that we initially budgeted.
Here, under the municipal buildings thing.
Sure.
There's a line for municipal buildings electricity. And it's been 91% spent.
There you go. And we're only.
Oh, no, excuse me, no, 91% left.
Yes, that's remaining. Yes, it's remaining.
And only.
It's not spent, it's remaining.
Oh, it's percent remaining.
It's percent remaining. So the total of CMP is 2,106 dollars and 76 cents for the whole town, for the whole.
Six oh two.
Exactly, mine too, so.
Six hundred dollars.
I wish my CMP was some of these.
Is that accurate?
Then under Fire Department is a line for electricity.
Yeah.
Well, because they're all separated out to different departments. They have electricity, rec department has electricity, um, police department has electricity, because they're all separate buildings and they all have their own line for electricity.
We have to, you have to go through there and pick them all out.
All right, so it is remaining and not.
It's remaining, yes. When you look at QuickBooks and these reports, they're what's remaining. And you can judge the amount, what we always, when we looked at these on the library trustees, what we always referred to was where you were with your um, full-time wages. So if you, and if you're at 75%, 76.9, everything else should be at least that or more.
Yep.
And that's how you judge where you are in your budget cycle. So you look at what's remaining for wages and then see where you, and obviously if the electricity is at 89%, we're still okay. And this is just, for instance, I think I'm following this line over for electricity, so like the rec department.
For here.
For this and also the building at the beach, I'm sure, together, so you're still fine.
Too ready now.
Yeah, so you're still okay.
That US Cellular number that you gave out, could you say that again so I can write that down?
Um.
That's only from the PV.
Yep, it is. Let me buy that at the end. Yeah, US Cellular, well, it was Public Works, there's um, seventy dollars and 45 cents, so obviously, but that's monthly billing, billing for code enforcement, Public Works and professional admin, so that, where, where that is, I don't know. But it was a total, see, he wrote one check to the US Cellular, or 211 dollars, so seventy dollars and 45 cents, I'd assume.
That's totally wrong. What my bill was. That's totally wrong, I know it is.
It's just the, the invoices haven't made it through the payment process?
They, they were done two weeks ago.
So 601 dollars in electricity cost for the fire department is not realistic? Significant, be more than that or?
If I got two CMP bills in the last four months. Nothing's consistent. I can't, I can't, I can't answer that question.
So essentially, from what I understand, from discussing about CMP before, CMP, this is delivery charges. And then the actual power is from whoever Kurt Lund contracted with in Constellation Energy. So somewhere we get.
I'm just saying, uh, sometimes I get a bill for the north station, sometimes I get a bill for the center station, sometimes I get a bill for power heater. There's months where I don't get any bills and I'm told that somebody in the town office processes them. So I can't, as a department head, update my spreadsheet correctly. Uh, I got one the other day and it was like, what, 330 dollars, I'm like, I think it was the first bill for the center station since, since July 1st. Like, doesn't make sense to me.
You don't consistently.
By long, long as somebody's doing it, you know, I guess that's fine. Bottom line comes out, but I can't answer if that's accurate. Doesn't sound right. Sounds like we should give a lie.
Yes.
Budget.
Can't budget, I'm supposed to, you know, prepare a budget for November now.
Right.
A whole other. No, I'm just, sometimes I just, go ahead. They need to hear it.
You're welcome.
So.
So, I think the motion we approve warrant number seven of this full year 2324.
Second.
It was a motion by Chris, second by Mark to approve warrant number seven for 2224, 2324, all those in favor.
Yes, we ought to.
Keep your budgets accurate.
Okay, I make a motion, we enter executive session pursuant to 36 MRSA, section 841, or two hardship and poverty abatement.
Second.
Okay, yeah.
So the motion by Chris, second by Dave to enter exhibit effect. All those in favor?
There we go.
So I make a motion, we come out of executive session.
Second. Chance made a motion, out of executive session, Joe sec- seconded it, so all those in favor.
I make a motion that we table the matter, the hardship poverty abatement matter, uh, item number nine on our agenda until later session.
Second. So, Cat's made a motion and Joe seconded it to table the item on our, number nine on our agenda. So, uh, another meeting. Uh, we get more information, all those in favor?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second, all those in favor?